Um, so before we do anything else, do we want to open the bids?
It's on the agenda.
Okay, that's okay. So we'll wait until um. Until we get to it. All right, so uh today is October sixth, two thousand twenty-five, our select board meeting. I'd like to begin with warrants. I'd like to move that we accept payroll number twenty-seven for two thousand ninety-one dollars and thirteen cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number twenty-eight for three thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. And hang on, because I don't have the rest of that.
I was gonna say, oh, there's no sense there.
I probably threw it away.
Isn't it on your paper though?
Yeah.
No, but what happens is we we when we don't meet on Mondays, we still have to sign the warrant. And so Donna takes the 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 numbers from that warrant with the payroll numbers and she puts it on our agenda so she can read it.
So I took a picture of it. And I forgot, it's five cents.
Yeah.
Oh, five.
Three thousand five hundred eleven dollars and five cents. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to move that we accept payroll number twenty-nine for two thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to move that we accept payroll number thirty for five thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. Do I have a second? All in favor?
All right.
The reason we have so many payrolls is because we have our staff, which is one payroll, and then we have um people like our road commissioner and um and also the CEO who um got paid this this month. And lastly, I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number thirty-one for sixty-nine thousand fifty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
And the reason that is so large is the transfer station and the ambulance account both were around thirty thousand dollars. So that accounted for sixty thousand dollars of it right there. I'd like to move that we accept the minutes for nine twenty-two, twenty-five select board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll sign those quickly and. Then next on the agenda is the winter sand bids. And by the way, there were um agendas. Did all of you get one? Okay. I know somebody had the whole stack at one point in time.
Well, it's winter sand bid.
Bid, all right. So we have one bid, and it is from Country Fair. Received nine thirty at three fourteen B M. And the bid, which is for delivering and mixing the salt and the sand together, which uh we may have changed in that last year. Country Fair in Bowden, uh the amount is thirty-five dollars and fifty cents per cubic yard. And
remember what it was last year, Jim?
I think I tabled it.
Well, we will table that.
It was in the twenties.
Seems yeah.
Higher.
Yeah, in the twenties, yes.
Yeah.
It was higher, yeah.
Okay, we will not make a decision on this. We have to open it and acknowledge that, and we'll talk about it in our um our workshop later this week. April, I'll put it in here for now.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah.
And then you can scan it and uh we won't lose it. All right, on to citizens issues, and I see several people here. So I'm gonna start with Mario only because he came in at five o'clock or five thirty. Um and then I'll come to Richard and then whoever was next on the list, but Mario?
After this tumultuous meeting last last time, I bothered to study your report. Um, one of the questions I had was when you look at the plumbing permits, they're all listed with an amount of money on the right-hand side. When I saw the building permits, only building permits and no amount of money is listed. I think it should be there, it should be both the same, and I don't know why it isn't.
Okay, and and actually, that's a a a good question since um when we had our town meeting a couple of weeks ago, and there were there was a question about amount of money and and if we have three um two deputy CEOs, are we gonna have to pay a lot more? And so knowing um that information maybe would make it a little bit easier for people. So we have acknowledged that, and we'll talk to Gary about it and April, who does the book. And um we'll see what we come up with. Um, there may be a reason that it's not in there. Um, you know, maybe he has five hundred of them and just is too much, you know, I I don't even know how many.
Sixty seven.
Nothing.
Sixty nine. Well, big deal.
Yeah, yeah. All right, anything else from you? All right, Richard?
Question, what do you project will be uh the increase in operating cost for this town for next year over this year?
What what's the rate of inflation gonna be this year?
What?
What's inflation gonna be this year?
Negative three percent.
I I I don't know that we have any uh way of of.
But I don't see any big things coming up over this next year.
It it really depends of, I I actually, I I don't think that's the case. Um when we get information about the fire station, you know, maybe we have to take a loan if we can't get a grant for that. Um, that's gonna cost a million to a million dollars.
Yep.
So I would assume that um when we finally start working on that, that there's gonna be that cost. Um any idea about the um the town hall?
The town hall, we could probably forecast that we need another fifty thousand dollars to work on.
Yeah.
So
reasonable.
Yes, but but for sure, I think our biggest expense is going to be the fire department. And, you know, we are looking into grants, but um you know, it's hard to to know.
But don't you have a budget where you estimate that you're spending fifty thousand for town hall, thirty thousand for fire department, two hundred thousand for labor, you know?
So so fixed costs, yeah, we can figure those out.
Right.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have what electricity is gonna cost this year or what oil is gonna cost, but we can project those. On the town hall, we can't say, oh, we're gonna spend fifty thousand, because as we get into this construction there, it's just getting worse and worse and worse. Or I could look at you and say I could spend two hundred thousand at the town hall.
Basically, you know, you start the year with a budget. Um, it's not an exact science, but it's basically you allocate so much money for such a project.
Right.
Some of them are fixed, snow removal.
Mm-hmm.
Certain.
Those we know, but 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 the town, the 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 fire station, we need somebody, we have fifty thousand, and we'll have an engineer give us an idea of what needs to happen. And then we'll come back to the town and say, this is what needs to happen. Whether we take and and build a new one, whether we take part of it off, that we don't have a clue.
I agree.
But it'll million, two million, and will we get a grant? Will we, you know, have to get a loan?
You have the money from Paul, right?
That is eight hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. We we should put a dent in it, but we'll not.
That's a nice jump.
Yeah, 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 we're not, yes, but still.
No, I know.
Yeah, the the unknown or i- is how much is it gonna cost? Yeah, yeah.
But speaking to, me personally, and I I said this at the last meeting, the last two years have been tough with the excess acreage that we had to, we changed the the figuring on the the trio program for that. So everybody who had excess acreage over the building lot sizes, those taxes went up. This year, it was um, you know, the 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 factoring that we had to do, plus the budget was was hefty this year. That is a big contributing factor to it. So being conscious of doing that to people for two years in a row, I I feel like we're gonna, we're gonna really do our best that that's not gonna happen again. And if it does happen again, you're gonna know it when you come into town meeting. So you know what you're close to being, what you can't ever be exact at that point, because it's backwards. We do the town meeting, approve the budget, and then we have the the commitment um where we find out a mill rate. So, but we can project it somewhat and give people a better idea. But we can, we can we're we're conscious of it. We're we're very conscious of it this year, because it's been a rough couple of years.
But but we know.
Acknowledge that.
Yeah, we know that it's gonna cost a lot for the fire department, and we'll know by next spring, hopefully.
Also, we have a meeting um next week here with the a gentleman that works for Susan Collins. She's been, she's been getting um, I always forget what it's called, um giving money out to to, yeah, to towns for fire departments. So he's coming here next week, and and we're hoping we can, you know, we're trying to work as many angles as we can on this, yeah.
Yeah, Mario?
Well, I just want to make sure, the assessment has nothing to do with the increase in the spending of the town. So that's really what you should.
Well, it's all, it's, oh, yeah, it's the spending, you're gonna stay hungry, of course.
Assessment, minimum rate has nothing to, but.
It's what we need to spend money on.
That's correct.
Of course, of course.
Yeah, so it it's, we'll do the best we can. It it's not like, you know, you know what what money's being spent and how it's being spent, but that's totally.
Also, like, like we say, ultimately, it's it's your decision when you come to town meeting to vote on what we think needs to be done for the town moving forward. But ultimately, it's the taxpayers' choice. Um, and if if they decide that they don't wanna spend that kind of money um that we think is necessary, then 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 that's the the choice that they can make.
What is the status of the reevaluation that we approved to be done by a?
It started. It's, they're already, they're already, I've met them on the road the other day, so they have started. Um, in fact, they had their mug shots uh on Facebook, um but they are out um starting to do that. But it'll it'll take a a year long.
They are going into gathering at this point, and then they'll go back to theirs. And so twenty twenty-seven, we're still looking at for the the final.
So what made you folks decide that you would increase everybody's property evaluation by ten percent?
That is, we did, we did, year before last, we did twenty-two percent because of the battle with the state. And that's kind of that catch twenty-two that we've been in. And once the revow is done, it'll come back to what it should be for everybody, because the state getting close to the hundred percent that the state says we should be at in terms of our valuation. We have to do something to kind of.
You have done, you have put a lot of people in a very hard financial spot. A very hard financial spot. People that might lose their property. In fact, I've got one person talking to me right now.
You shouldn't yell.
But then, I'm sorry, I'm fucking, but it's so frustrating.
It's not their fault. The state mandates that we raise the assessment to a certain point. If you would come to meetings, you would know all these things.
I know that.
What it does look like. So that's all I have to say.
I understand, Richard, I do. And we we feel, you know, we feel for for people, and we're 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 battling, we're in the middle here. We're trying to 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 make things right for the town. We're 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 dealing with properties that need, they're at their their breaking point, and they need TLC. Where that's what we're looking at is is, you know, a big part. And that's where a big chunk of the spending came from this year, is all the capital um improvement.
But last year, the rate per thousand was seven percent. This year, you bumped it up to eight and a half percent.
Okay, yeah, I'll attempt to explain that also. So the first year I was on the board, we used surplus to offset, which gives you a lower mill rate, right? And then the next year, there was a a a calculation mistake in the um in the commitment, so we didn't ask for enough money. So rather than send out another tax bill, we took more from surplus. So what happened was the mill rate last year probably, no, this year should have been closer to eight, which means our increase would have been fifteen percent rather than twenty-six. But it's just, I mean, I'm not, I'm just explaining, this is, it's a combination.
Explaining.
It's a combination of, and and we're not happy about it either. We wanna get to a point where we're more stable, and once the revow's done and everybody's at their proper levels, we can start from that point.
Property because of what you've done.
It's a if somebody's in that dire straits, I would recommend that they come in here and talk to Ashley.
Estimate a thirty-two percent increase last year. It's it's all around everywhere. There's some place.
Our 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 mill rate is still under uh double figures, which.
You can see the land making.
Yeah.
When you walk from the bridge and look at the other end of the bridge.
And part of the problem, Richard, is that we haven't paid, we haven't been putting money aside when we should have every single year. And so our mill rate has been so low, we haven't put money aside. Ten years, we've known that this was um broken, and we didn't put a penny aside. So the mill rate actually should have been higher for the past ten years, at least. We haven't put money.
Falling off the cliff.
Now we're falling. That's why we had, we had an open house to let people see the damage. We didn't even know about it until last November, when the insurers came back and said, oh, so what have you done to to fix the fire station? We hadn't done anything. We didn't even know about it. So the fire, so that they actually dealt with, we we almost lost the insurance. And if we weren't gonna do something about it, we we wouldn't even have that building insured right now. So eh so this has been, it's not been the past two years, it's actually been the past ten years, that if we had put money aside every year, our mill rate would have been a little bit higher every year. And it wouldn't be such as this great big jump that all of a sudden what we're seeing. This is the first year that we finally have somebody who's looking at all the properties all together. And you know, the more we're seeing with with the town hall, the more we're seeing how bad a shape that's in. The um, so it it's sort of, all of a sudden, and and we gave people a chance. We either do something with the fire department, or we're not gonna have a fire department. We do something to the town hall, or we we have no place to meet. Um, and no place to have elections, so um, and and we asked for only fifty thousand. There's a lot more that's wrong with that. Uh, and we're trying to get grants. We're trying to do the best that we can. It's not that, you know, that that we're doing this to to hurt people, or or, you know, it it's.
It's true, it's true. To me, just what you're doing, the way you're doing it, to me, doesn't make logical financial financial sense. Such increasing the per rate value from seven thousand to, I mean, eh from seven to eight and a half. If you hadn't done that, people wouldn't be getting hurt as much. But that was, to me, an arbitrary decision by the three of you.
It it actually was um our assessor who who talked to the state, and this is what um the, this way, we didn't lose things um money from the state. So it actually would have been bad if we didn't do the um.
Either way, it affects the 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 taxpayers.
Yeah.
Well, the middle right is one thing, but the basic problem is really what the expenses are.
Right.
If they would spend less, the mill rate would come down. So what you have to look at is the expenses. So mill rate is one thing, but the mill rate just is there to cover the expenses. If if we would have had less expenses, the mill rate would be lower. So it's a very simple math thing. And the thing is, for many years, nothing got fixed, nothing. Uh, your town hall volunteer painted it, and a year later, the paint came down already. It wasn't done professionally. So that's why they had lower taxes. But now it's time to fix everything. And I know I don't enjoy it, you don't enjoy it, but I don't think we have a choice.
Yes, we do have a choice. We can do it in steps.
Instead of that.
Doing it all at once. So people can adjust to the fact that, well, next year, it's gonna go up another ten percent. But it isn't gonna go up twenty-five percent and twenty-seven percent like it is this year. You know, it it's a matter of doing it, looking at the people that you serve, their ability to pay.
Richard, I am very sensitive to um, because I am also the general assistance administrator. I am very sensitive to this issue. And um, you know, we're hoping with the revow that things will even out, and those who should be paying more taxes will be paying more taxes, and those who shouldn't be paying as much in taxes will have their taxes go down. But right now, this is the best decision that was made based on talking to the assessor, who's a professional, and the state in order to not lose our state funding, um because either way, people are gonna be hurt. And, you know, I it, yeah, and I I feel bad, and if somebody is is needs to talk to Ashley about it, um, you know.
I've got one person that's gonna lose his property.
Well.
But he won't, because I'm gonna step in and I'm gonna pay the rest. How many of you people sitting at that desk would do that? Thank you.
All right, next, um.
I'm just here to. I'm just taking notes.
Carol, you were here two weeks ago and got to see all the fun, and here you are again.
I came back for more.
You wanna come up here?
Oh, I do not.
Mario, thank you.
Alan. I'm here for one of the agenda topics, so no rush.
Oh, okay. Um, Jim?
Um, I I I kinda have an issue um the 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 street signs on the island, uh the the vandalism and stuff going on. Are you guys aware of that? Is there any plan on um repairing the signs, figuring out who's doing it, uh stuff along those lines?
Jim?
There's been an ongoing investigation, if you will.
Oh, I think, okay.
It's all one fish, plus a lot of them, so.
Okay, okay.
The problem is all the signs, Jim, with DOT's responsibility.
Yeah.
All ones on one forty-four.
Are are they gonna replace them? Um.
I call over there, I leave a message, and I never get a call back anymore. The only answer is if somebody emails Dave Allen, like, well, determine that he's the guy that got Steve in New York, because I had no luck over here.
That's all. I was curious if Philip could, if he likes badly on our town and have all the signs vandalized?
I agree.
Once you've got the island, it's it's down there too.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a trail from the Monsby Roadhouse.
Yeah.
Westwood Island.
Yeah.
Rock and match, uh, outside, yeah.
Yeah, and the one by my house is down. It's it's the the one by my house is totally down. And there was one that said curb coming.
Yeah.
And that one has been down. It, first of all, it was vandalized, and then then it was sitting on the ground for a while, and I don't know where it is now. There's a pole there.
Vandalized and disappeared.
Yeah.
Pole's still there. I'm I'm sure it can't be cheap to replace all those signs.
And you you replace them, and then they get vandalized again, and I I maybe that's uh DOT's thinking.
Someone could figure out who's doing it, and they should be um there's been.
The sheriff has been called before. Yeah, it is, it's been an issue for probably a good year.
All right, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, we're we're well aware of it. Um, Jim is aware of it, but um, those are DOT signs that are states.
And I think we're such low priority.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
You know, they threw some pavement last year, and now we're off the grid for a while.
For a while, yeah.
Uh, as you can tell by the trimmers, they've done.
Yeah. All right, anything else for citizens? Okay, uh, Rhodes?
Put Grandale down over on the intersection there. I think I'm pretty well wrapped up over there.
That's exciting.
That looks good.
Uh, I think I'm pretty well done for the year because we're running out of time. And these fall rains, when is gonna start? And that's a whole nother, that's a whole next season's worth of business, Richard did.
Rain?
Uh. So, yeah, that's that's where we're at on that. I mean, I mean, if something comes out, all poles, we'll be dealing with that. Any maintenance work, I think, is over for the year.
Yelling. So cute.
Still be able.
Do you have any grading on your schedule for the fall?
Not really, because we're all, that right now, you might as well be trying greatest.
It's rock hard, yeah.
I'd like to, but I don't see it. Unless we get some serious rain, and then we have a dry spell, then I might.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, because Bay Shore Road, I know the hill is not good. Post Office Road, this place is ran is not good. But all you're gonna do is loosen it up and melt marble.
Yeah, Bay Shore's actually kind of flattened itself back out again. So we went through, we went through the washboards, and then we kind of smoothed out, so.
The only thing I wanted to say while Richard was here, we're also halfway through a road improvement program, which should lower our maintenance costs in the future. And the more we pay, the cheaper it gets, because pavement is much cheaper, but nobody wants nothing to pay.
Carol, I know you where you live, but if you ever get the chance to go down to um West Shore, the lower part of West Shore Road, and they have the uh guardrails up now, a nice paved road, it's just, it's.
Oh, right by the brewery, right?
Oh, there you go. All right, yeah. So I I mean, things are really looking good. You know, for those who live at the north end of the island, don't always get to see what's happening down at the lower end.
She gets it right.
Yeah, yeah.
As I said, you know, we have remind everybody, the pavement on North End Road and Doggett Road and stuff is halfway through its potential life cycle to be on a good economical maintenance schedule. So that means we got more roads to do in the next five years, so we can start.
Right.
But the dirt roads, I feel, were making good progress on it, with this maintenance budget.
Yeah, that's great. I know you're very sensitive to that and and but roads cost.
It is, you know, and then to go back to Richard's comments, you know, it, when we did work up the North End Road five years ago, a fifteen-inch, twenty-foot-long piece of pipe was two hundred dollars. That is now three hundred and fifty dollars. And it takes two of them across the road.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't take any chickens, just two pieces of pipe.
Yeah, everything gets more expensive.
Seven hundred bucks?
Yeah.
Seven hundred bucks, hope there's an eighteen-inch, this probably goes.
Yeah.
So everything follows.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's out of, out of anybody, I say it, out of all my hands.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And things, it it's like getting the repairs done. Had we been able to repair the fire station ten years ago, it would be a lot different cost than what it will be now.
I agree with him, Star is like, you know, you work your way into this reserve account. But all that should have started ten years prior, because we're at the, we're gonna do something with this right now issue over here, and we're at that point down there. And it's costing cost.
Yeah, or forty years ago, we should have started saving.
Well, there should always be something there.
Yeah.
Roads, so if we get roads done, it doesn't mean, well, that's it, we don't need to put anything aside. Roads, so if we get roads done, it does seem, well, that's it. We don't need to put anything aside.
Yeah, there should always have been money put aside and for the, all of our properties. And, um, and that just hasn't happened. And now we are paying for it, literally. Um, you want an update on the committee that, uh, and maybe that's why Mary Ellen is here?
No, no, no.
But would you like to update?
I do a quick update on, so Properties Committee, uh, the work on the Old Town Hall on the front of it is looking very spiffy.
Yes.
Uh, they're doing a really good, very detailed job. So every time I've gone there, you know, it's they're doing it right, they're doing it well. It should last a long time, at least while the front of the building, you know, for the rest of it falls down, stone front.
This is a nice facade there.
They are, they're up toward, going towards the peak now, and they're working their way up with the new siding. So that should be coming, um, along pretty quickly this weekend. We have a little bit of rain forecasted. Now, on one side, I hope we get the rain. On the other side, they're not going to work in the rain. So that could delay. And then we're on to, um, April's ramp will be will be next.
Yep, because we've got election coming up.
Just in time for the election.
Just in time. Um, so that's all good news down there. And the horticulture people, they've got Marty and Bonnie have said that they're interested in starting to move some of the plants from. No, she's shaking her head no. As soon as we move, as soon as we get some rain.
Yes, we moved stuff in July. It was going to rain and that was, it didn't rain and it hasn't rained since.
So we're hoping it does.
Yep.
And then if it does, uh, we'll get some of that stuff moved up so that we don't have.
We have bulbs and, um, they'll go in first. And so, yeah, we're anxious because things down there need to be moved.
Yep, so, um, I don't know if you guys are detail oriented, but Jimmy did the pruning of the trees all around the parking lot here so that people can come in with a a higher vehicle perhaps and not rub up against the trees. So thank you for that. And.
Any update on the, um, the work that you and Mary Ellen and Gay are doing?
So, well, mostly Gay and Mary Ellen are doing it. But we have been, this past weekend, we spent quite a bit of time looking at the grants that we thought were going to be uh, usable for the Old Town Hall. And one of them actually was a ten million dollar bond last referendum.
Right.
For the purpose of community buildings that are on the historic register.
Yeah.
So we sat through a Zoom call on Friday and then I cried over the weekend because the monies that we have available from the taxpayers of the town that we were going to consider using as the match, and this is a seventy-five percent match. So if we put in thirty-five thousand dollars, we could get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, anyway, one of the things that came out of that call was that the match from the town can't be from governmental sources, which I said, what? And essentially they said, yeah, you can't have monies that the taxpayers were asked to pay to use as this match. So then I asked the question, like, okay, like, where do people get the money from? And that even like the lead guy from the the History Preservation Commission was like, I don't know. This was a legislative piece that was put in. We've never had to deal with this before.
Oh, my God.
Then there's the the Development Director from Camden was on, and he seems like a pretty bright guy. And he pretty much says, yeah, you're going to have to, you know, come up with donations. But then I'm like, well, we can't ask for donations either. Like, we're not allowed to do that as the town. So, uh, yeah.
So so Gay and I are hoping to meet, uh, through for your Friday of this week to have our second, uh, you know, session about all this stuff.
Yeah, but that was kind of like the golden star that we thought, oh, this is going to be great.
And it's complicated. Monies put aside for something. I thought we could accept donations.
We can accept donations, like, yeah, there's limits to it, but, I mean, what is it for for the Old Town Hall?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something that the taxpayers at town meetings have allocated funds for and want to do the repairs.
Right.
So I believe we could accept donations, but it's a pretty hard ask to get.
I was going to say, it's great, they've already donated.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Four period of time.
Yeah, yeah.
But we'll, Gay, you know, you know, Gay, there's no time.
Yeah, yeah, we were thinking about the forty thousand dollars that we may or may not get for for the, um, cemetery, because somebody donated that, but that was for a specific cause that we can't use. We have the money that was donated, um, in the will for, but it was specified for the fire department. There's been nobody that says, um, you know, we'd like to preserve this town, town hall and donated any money, but anyways, it was kind of.
So that was one of the grants. The other grant, which was a much smaller, one to one, ten, up to ten thousand dollars. So the big one was up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as the match. So if we had eighty-three thousand dollars to put towards it, they'd give us two hundred and fifty and we would have three hundred and thirty-three, but we can't do that. Uh, the other one is a one to one, ten thousand dollar, which we also thought was going to be doable. And that came back with, it has to be a nonprofit organization. And it had to have had some lease arrangement already in place for that. So so that could work for the charge if the WCA wants to to do a ten thousand dollar grant thing. Um, but neither of our, like, the ones we thought were going to be golden, neither one of them are golden. They're just a big old goose egg, nothing.
Yeah, we'll we'll continue to look at that, look at other sources. And Gay is looking at another real source of.
Yeah, so.
All right, so we're good, yeah.
Anyway, if anybody has a big donation they want to make, we'll, we'll take it and put it towards the grant, but.
But thank you, Mary Ellen and Gay for for working on it.
That's important, yeah.
Yeah, because that, it really needs a lot of work and, you know, it'd be nice not to keep putting Band-Aids on it, but.
Well, the fact that there is grant money, if somebody wanted to make a donation, their their money would would, you know, go really far.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe we can work something out with that. The, this is the first round. There's going to be three rounds of this grant money. So if we if we don't get it this first round, maybe we can put things in place so that we can make it.
Time to develop a.
In the second round. Um, there's also other things about the grant that were a little prohibitive. One is that you have to have an architectural drawing of the work that's going to be done, which that's not really that hard for us because we know what we're going to do. But we've got to pay to have it drawn up by an architect. So there's some money upfront for something that, you know, we're not sure we're going to be guaranteed. And then the other piece that was funky was, it is not that they give you the money and you go and do the work. You do the work and they reimburse. So now you're limited again because you can only do, you know, what you can afford to do. Then you got to invoice it, the contractors got to get their money, then we got to put in for the reimbursement. So it's not.
And how long does it take to get reimbursed by the state?
Well, they said we could, we we could file reimbursements as often as we need.
Yeah, they said every week.
Yes, still.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
But like, you know, it's it's not the best thing personal town because where are we going to pull the money if you're going to need it again?
Yeah, so.
Interesting. Thank you for.
Thank you for.
At least.
All, all.
You know, and people don't always appreciate, it's like looking for grants, but it's not that they're easy to come by and.
They're all unique now. They've all changed in the last year or two or five. And so, no, it's, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a weird hoops.
All right, we're going to move on to select board business. And the first thing is, um, did you want to take that?
To thank Ted Christie for putting up the sign boards at the, um, Ferry Landing. They look nice, they're functional, and people appreciate the information that's on them. And Ted took it upon himself to make that happen. So we want to reach out and say thank you.
Yeah, it's got two signs. One's on the latrine and it has all the information. It's got the the ordinance for, um, the harbor. And then it's also got a bunch of pictures of different fish, you know, that you can.
Which you're allowed to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then he has also a freestanding one that April, um, you might want to look at. Um, because, um, Ted has done both of those and they look really, really nice, very professional looking. Uh, and he just asked if he could do that. And he came to one of our town meetings and we said, sure, if you want to do that. Um, and they they look really nice. Um, we have an ambulance contract. We just paid them today, but we need to to get the the contract signed. Um, and so, um, I'd like to move, um, to accept the ambulance contract, which is uh, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. Uh, which is about, I think, what it's been. It's been around the twenty-seven thousand, right?
Yeah.
So do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
You're acting so nicely, I know you. Yep, that was a scribble.
All right, next on the agenda is the appointment of Kim Lynch as Select Board Liaison to the Property Maintenance Committee. Um, pretty much all of our committees, we have a variety of people. I'm I'm on committees and and whatnot, but um, because she plays such a key role, we had to sort of make this a special, um, position. So she is, um, the liaison for that, if we e- accept her. Um, so I'd like to move that we appoint Kim Lynch as Select Board Liaison to Property Maintenance.
I'll second that. All right, all in favor?
All right. Think I have to stay in room?
You can, or if you want to vote, do you want to vote yes or no?
I don't think you want to know.
This is kind of cool because now each of them has a role. And it's like an elected position. So Lisa's Chair of the Board of Assessors, she does all the tax stuff. Donna, Chair of the Select Board, does all the general assistance and all the human resources, doing the staff stuff. I know, we're tough. And now Kim, we kind of created this positioning because she'd been doing all this work, but there was nothing to like let her to make it official. So now she has her official hat on the Select Board and they have their sort of respective roles.
Which is also why, I'm sure all of you remember, uh, when we did this year's warrant, instead of, there were different paid positions, what we did is said the same amount to all three of us. Um, it used to be, I don't know, close to four thousand. But then if you were the Chair, you got an extra amount. If you were Chair of Board of Assessors, you got an extra amount. Kim didn't get anything. And so we said, we're just going to make it even. And actually, it wound up overall getting less. Um, because, um, but, which, we don't do this job for the money.
You think?
Be aware of that.
That's fine.
All right, uh, last on our, not last on our agenda, but last to sign, if we choose to, is an abatement for, um, Nancy Appleton. Um, she has a big lot that she's selling and has built a new house. And so, um, she has asked for, um, an abatement and been working with Ashley on that. And so, um.
We have to go into the Board of. No, because this is a Select Board and Board of Assessors meeting, so advertised, so.
Okay. So I'd like to move that we accept, um, this abatement. Um, basically, she split her property into two lots in August of twenty twenty-four. And the split was missed during the commitment. So, um, they should have caught that and they didn't. Um, so, um.
Second.
Okay.
Um, favor?
All right.
So I think you should sign first. And there's a bunch of places to sign. All right, um. Next is, um, a conversation that we started two weeks ago, and that was about the the data center. And, uh, just a couple updates, um, as a board and at pretty much as a, a staff and board, we're, um, considering retaining, um, uh, somebody who could help us figure out if this does come through, if the data center does happen, then what is it that we can do as a town to make sure that we're not left out when Ms. Cassett says that they, it's it's, it will be on them and any tax break would go to them because it's on their property. When it's Westport Island, that would have to look at it all the time. So rather than, um, wait until we find out that it's actually happening, we want to find out whether, um, what we can do now to make sure that, uh, in fact, we just got, um, notice from, um, the manager in Ms. Cassett, we'd ask for, um, uh, access to information.
Why you want to meet and somebody told?
Excuse me?
Somebody told me today you want to meet them. This Cassett.
No, I know, but a- actually, I'm going to at least, um, go to the Zoom for their meeting, but no, there was no, yeah, yeah. We we asked, uh, actually two weeks ago for, um, any conversation, any, uh, information that they had. And, um, we did hear right back saying that it was a non-disclosure, uh, agreement and that even if we get anything, anything that was part of that non-disclosure agreement, we can't have access to. So, um, we did go to a meeting last, um, last week, forgot what day it was.
Thursday?
Thursday night.
Yeah.
Maybe once.
We went to a meeting last Thursday. It was with the Maine, uh, Maine Yankee. And we clearly heard from their standpoint is Maine Yankee, their full purpose for existing as this, um, board or whatever is to get rid of the spent fuels that have been promised. We're going to get rid of that, I think, thirty years ago or whatever. Um, nothing has been done yet, but they will keep meeting yearly until those, um, till they finally figure out, um, somehow to get rid of them. That's their whole point. They didn't know anything about the data center. Um, they did respond to our question a- about it, that they basically knew nothing about it. Um, we keep being reminded that the president seems to be, um, very interested in data centers right now. If he should choose to override any of the regulations in the contracts that are in place now, um, something else could happen with Maine Yankee. But as far as we know right now, there is a commitment, there's a contract with twenty-seven, I think, organizations and there are all sorts of things in place to deal with the spent fuel, uh, fuel rods or whatever. So, um.
And one condition was that there may not be any new or different nuclear.
Yep.
Power structures created there until the spent fuel that is in existence there is gone and taken care of. So that's one of those things that could get overridden by.
And we have no.
And the.
For that.
Yeah, we can't fix that.
None.
The President of the United States decides that these contracts aren't binding or Maine's referendum law of nuclear development doesn't count. I don't know what the Westport Island Select Board is going to do about that. I think that's above their five thousand dollar a year pay grade.
That can perform these generating plants that powers ourselves with, but it will really be new generation.
They could develop that property across the street. I mean, the Maine Yankee contract has nothing to do with the three hundred acre parcel across the street from Maine Yankee. They should bring one of them along to using those little mini.
Right, modular.
Clear, yeah, on reactors, yeah.
And they they would use the, you know, the the electrical system that's already, you know, in place there, but.
It's been bolstered re- recently.
Yeah.
Although.
Access for any data lines coming into that place or out of that place. But the framework is going to both have official intelligence. And I want everybody to sleep at night, so I'm not going to tell you more.
But even if they wanted to do that, there would still, if the laws apply and are not just being overridden, Maine has a law, you can't do that without a statewide referendum. So it'd be a huge deal and we'd see it coming.
They did a statewide referendum when Maine Yankee came.
Yeah, it could be approved. I mean, we don't know. But it would have to happen. It would take at least a year or two to get it on the ballot. It would be like a big thing.
That was a surprise. You, you know, it just appeared.
Yep, Mary Ellen, you had your hand up.
Yes, so I know there's a lot of, a lot of aspects to this, political, technical, all this kind of stuff. And maybe, uh, maybe today I'm being a conservative person. Um, but I'm, I'm going to suggest that the town wait and not conjure with somebody right now. Co- a couple of things. Uh, I I won't tell you my personal opinion about the data centers, that's, you know, whatever, but I, uh, but I'm a planner and I do think it's proper to get ready. But I don't know this company and I would think that maybe we could. But I don't know this company and I would think that maybe we could, um, bear with me, I don't know whether you were thinking about paying somebody or whether this is pro bono work, but I'm leaning towards getting an RFP together. So you're outlining the services or the outcomes from this person or she and Karen or that person. So I, I would like you to look at this again before you sign any sort of agreement with a company that, though I Googled them and they seem to be fairly, um, busy in the past ten to twenty years. Um, I, we don't know them. So I would ask that, that, um, kind of reserves, um, some discussion for, uh, later. And, um, and that's when we create an RFP so that other people could respond to it besides this company. I'm not sure, will you plan to, to this, have this on pro bono? Or, um, or were you gonna pay for the services?
I think the, the initial.
Yeah, so Mary Ellen, it's, it's fairly cheap. So what they charge is a thousand dollars to just do like an initial analysis of the project, the location, the different regulatory bodies that would be involved, the various tables we could possibly be at. Um, and then if that first level of analysis shows like, okay, there's actually some kind of battle here that you're gonna wanna get involved or involved in, they can do another step for another thousand and then they refer you to an attorney. So it's sort of like, before you get an attorney and get into big money, you can have these folks, um, we've done a bunch of projects all over the country, including data centers, just kind of analyze it for you.
But I would like to, I'd like to see where there's somebody from Maine that might respond. And that's why in RFP, whether you're spending a thousand dollars or zero, um, anyway.
That's it.
My suggestion would be to take a little bit more time and to do something that actually gives, you know, I call it, I, I know that somebody's looked into this as well, but I also would like to see the opportunity provided to some Maine consultants. And I don't have anyone in mind, I'm just making it up right.
Yep.
It's a process.
No, that's a, a, a good comment. And we talked about it the first time last Thursday or last Wednesday, whatever day it was. Um, I'm sure we'll talk about it again.
Kind of bringing it out to a public meeting, you know, so.
One of the things.
Very elegant, but not, not meetings because I did search for many people and I couldn't find any.
Well, I think creating an RFP would allow, allow the town to do some more promotion around that. Again, I'm not, there could be somebody from New England, who knows what's gonna make Mary Ellen happy? But, but this is a clearly out of state entity, uh, experience. But also for paying money, that's, that's, let's have your outcomes sort of articulated in some kind of document, um, so that.
Yeah. But tomorrow night, um, you know, maybe we'll get more information, um, because select board, the Wisconsin Select Board will meet. And, you know, they may have nothing on the agenda or they may have, you know, some information. One, one of the things that I'm sort of uneasy about, and I did talk to, um, Cameron Rennie was at the meeting last, last week. And, you know, it, it hasn't been decided yet. And that's, but, but then you also don't wanna wait until it's been decided and then it's too late to, to say anything about it. So it's trying to figure out what in the world to do. And, but as a board, we're trying to be sort of neutral. Our, our goal is to find out what we could do to get our foot in the door to make sure that if they are promising tax breaks and this, that, and the other, that we could have our opportunity. There is a group of concerned citizens. And I believe at this point in time, they're also sort of being, just gathering information.
Yep.
But, um, and that is, um, she was here two weeks ago. I don't know if you remember her, Carol, Brady Anne Young.
Yes.
She was sitting over there. So she's been gathering information and, um, you know, sharing, um, different, different things. And so that, there is a citizens group.
Yep.
Which I, I think is, is great. But as a board, we're just trying to say, if this is gonna happen, and we won't have any say because Wisconsin's been clear about that, that how can we make sure that we somehow have some voice? So, um, that's, um, that's where we are with that. So we'll talk of, okay, some more on Wednesday, but thank you for that information. Um, anything else on the data center? Nope. All right, um, deer. Um, we've been hearing a lot about the deer issue and, um, on Facebook and everywhere else. And Stacy was here a few weeks ago and talked about, just in one week, I think there were nine, nine hits with the deer. Those are just ones we know about. Um, so you've been busy with deer.
I have so, I wrote a letter to the state wildlife biologist, his name is Keel Kemper, asking if he had suggestions, thoughts, anything. And he came back with a few minor comments, but then he offered to come to the island and have a sit-down with the island residents to maybe come up with some mitigation issues. So, um, we're trying to get that scheduled somewhere towards the end of October is what we're looking at right now. Don't have a date or a time yet, but.
Make it through D-land.
All right.
We're gonna have everybody arrive at dusk.
All right, um, yeah, as soon as we hear something, it'll, it'll come out. Um, speaking about, I'm gonna jump down to, um, we do have a talk and it's gonna be at dusk. Um, the winter moth talk, uh, somebody from the state um, has offered to come, uh, to Westport.
Okay.
We're gonna have it right here. Uh, and that is, uh, October twenty-first at six o'clock. And the state entomologist will be, um, so some big professional who will tell us what to do about the winter moth. Since last year, we, we had an issue with them, um, last spring. Um, and hopefully we'll figure out what to do in the, before next spring. So that is ten twenty-one at six o'clock, right here at the, um, town office. And hopefully we'll have a good crowd and we'll just all squeeze in together. Uh, next thing is in-person absentee voting begins on October seventh, which is actually tomorrow. Um, so, uh, you can come in during office hours, see April, and you can do your, um, your absentee ballots, especially if you know you're not gonna be around for an election day.
Well, so we'll be, um, videotaping the, uh, the winter moth.
Yeah, and you can attend by Zoom too.
Yeah, so people will be able to see it another time if they want. They can't come for that, but I think.
Okay. So if there is no other announcement or anything else, then I'd like to move that we adjourn for the evening. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Uh, thank you.
Thanks.
Hi.
I did that one comment, I went online.